I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a number of things on our agenda tonight. The first one obviously is the public hearing for the proposed assessments. There is information in the back. People need to see what is on our agenda. Laurie, would you please call roll?
Mayor Collins?
President.
Councilmember Rogers?
Here.
Councilmember Blake?
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Rainbow? She via phone?
Nope.
Nope?
No, she's resting and gonna come later.
All right. Also in attendance, we have the city engineer Shane Nelson and city attorney Bob Ruby.
All right. So the first item on our agenda, if everybody would tune on their microphones, please, would be the public hearing for proposed assessments of costs related to the 2021 road improvement proposals to Ebony Street Northwest and Garnett Street Northwest project. And we'll put it over to our engineer Shane Nelson to get us going here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll just give a short presentation, just as a kind of a refresher. Our first, our first hearing was what's called the public improvement hearing for this project. That was held in December of 2020. Since then, we've prepared construction plans, actually went out for bid. And now this, tonight is the assessment hearing. And this is where we're most interested in hearing your comments about the proposed assessment amount. So I'll give you a little bit of background, and then we'll get to the proposed assessment amount. So the project in question is Ebony and Garnett Street. Now then has 34 miles of paved roads, 29 miles of gravel roads. So that point, just to illustrate, we have a lot of roads and not enough, we don't levy enough money to fully fund these capital improvement projects. Therefore, we have a system where the city assesses a portion of those project costs. So if this project moves forward, it will happen in 2021. So the original pavement was constructed in 1992, about 29 years ago. It's been in a pretty tough shape for several years. Utilizes a rural section for drainage, which means that there's no curb and gutters. It's, you know, ditches and driveway culverts. So last year, the city obtained some additional soil borings. We wanted, we wanted to see what we had remaining for aggregate base thickness. We also were interested in knowing the condition of the underlying subgrade. All in all, those soil borings came back favorable. The, there was a lot of variation in the aggregate base. So some areas, we only had three and a half inches of aggregate base. Other areas that have been rebuilt, we had significantly more. But that three and a half inches or that thin aggregate base is the reason that we suspect the pavement failed. Last year, the city replaced some of the older road culverts, also removed cattails in the ditches to try to improve some of the drainage. This is just a location map showing where those additional soil borings were taken in 2020. The soil boring logs that we use for preparation of our plans. So based on the existing thickness at the log location, that helped us determine how much additional Class 5 is needed at each location. Just scroll through those. So the proposed improvements would be to reclaim the failed bituminous. We would add aggregate base then, and our goal is to have a minimum of 12 inches of aggregate base in all sections to support the new pavement. Then we would pave the new bituminous pavement to a constructed thickness of three and a half inches thick. There is a newer section of Ebony Street that significant improvements were completed in the recent years, and in that portion, we propose to overlay. And of course, we would match all driveways. So in kind, if you have a paved driveway, we would match that with pavement, concrete driveway with concrete, and aggregate with aggregate. We've reestablished the gravel shoulder. Since the road will be slightly higher than it is now, we will use topsoil to kind of feather in the slopes as needed. And there's just a couple of driveway culverts out there that are greater than 50% full of sediment. And so in those areas, we do a little bit of ditching and try to clean that sediment out from the driveway culverts. So this is what the process looks like. This is a reclaim machine. It's kind of, you can see on this, on this side of the road, they've already made a pass going this way, and that, the bituminous has been reclaimed into the underlying aggregate base. Now this reclamer is going from the right of the screen to the left of the screen. There's the old pavement here. This machine grinds it up, mixes it into the underlying aggregate base, and then we use that as, as our base for the new road construction. So after the, the road is reclaimed, we would bring in additional aggregate base. You'll see a road raider like this shaping that. Then we will compact the aggregate base and then pave. So we understand that there has been some concerns or some issues with the road out there. And before we get to this step, there's what's called a test roll. So we do numerical testing, where they do like a nuclear density gauge, and we spot test all areas of the road. But in addition to that, there's a test roll with a load of dump truck, and that helps us visually observe if there are any remaining soft spots. So that would happen before we got to this part of the project. But once we work at this part of the project, we would pave in two lifts. So there's the two inch, what we call the base course, or the non-wearing course, and then the inch and a half wearing course. On the overlay section, it would just be the one lift of 1.5 inches or inch and a half wearing course. So for this project, we, bids were received and open on May 11th. We received several bids, and we received really good bids. So we, these notices were prepared based on this project estimate of $447,500. Based on the bids, the bids came in about $50,000 under this. So we're already seeing cost savings over our project estimates. Generally, the city and past projects will wait until we get to the end of the project, and at that time, all their costs are known. And if they have saved money on past projects, they generally pass those savings on to the residents. It's also proposed with this project that the city will pay for any subbase work and drainage improvements. So if for any reason, this road doesn't pass this test roll, the city would then be responsible for going in, you know, digging out those sections, repairing them if needed. And the estimated payment replacement costs are $288,000, and that's what the assessments are based off of. So again, on this map, all areas that have kind of a blue numbering, are proposed to receive an assessment. On this project, there are 20 benefiting properties. And based on those 20 benefiting properties, the city would pay 50% of the pavement replacement cost, with the remaining 50% being assessed to the benefiting properties. That yields an assessment amount of $7,400 per unit. So again, you can kind of think of this as the maximum amount. Once we've had this, this hearing, that amount cannot increase. However, the city could choose to lower it if they want to, if after we're done with the project, the costs come in lower. And that's generally considered, this project would be completed end of August. So that would be something that would be considered after September or October meeting. So that, that assessment amount could be paid in full prior to, prior to November 15th of this year. Or if you choose not to pay it off in full, it'll simply be added to your taxes, amortized over 10 years. So just a quick touch on the schedule. We're here tonight at the assessment hearing. So again, we're interested in hearing your feedback on whether or not you want this project to move forward, and also on the proposed assessment amount. At the June meeting then, the city council could consider approving the bids and awarding the contract. The project could start right away, but that's, that's kind of dependent on contractor scheduling. But we do call for this project to be completed at the end of August. So just before school starts back up, we like to have these projects completed. We always hear at these meetings, what are some alternatives? Can we delay the project? If we, if we do decide to delay the project, there are some gravel portions out there. The city could consider patching those. But really, this pavement is, it's past its life. It's not gonna stay together. And so you're gonna recognize just a, you know, more potholes, a decreased level of service. And I've been doing this for about 20 years now, and prices just, you know, they always seem to just keep on going up. They generally don't go down. So likely be a more expensive repair in the future. With that, that's the end of my presentation. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you or the city attorney. City attorney has any comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may? As engineer Nelson stated, this is the second of the two public hearings. You already did the improvement hearing where you saw a similar presentation, and he went through the, the project to get your feedback on that. Tonight's feedback is to answer any questions you might have, get your feedback about moving forward with this project, but really to hear also about the proposed assessment amount. And one thing I, I want to make sure I tell you is that, under Minnesota law, if you want to object to that assessment amount, possibly challenge it in court, you have to file a written objection before the close of this public hearing, if you haven't already done so. And I'm assuming you haven't received any written objections?
We have not.
No. So before the city council closes this public hearing, that, that is one of the requirements, if you wish to proceed with that. That doesn't mean that if we get done with this, that the city council is going to go forward. They still have to consider your comments tonight, and then at another different meeting, they will make a decision whether they award the contract and move forward, or take some other action. But I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that. Some things that the city councils at these public hearings, I don't know if any of that applies in this situation, but I've had it before where somebody comes in, I was noticed to be assessed, and that land is not buildable. You know, it's got wetlands on it, or for whatever, it's not buildable based on the zoning laws. Something like that is stuff that we'd like you to bring forward, because we now then would look at that, and then the city council would have to make a decision on that. It wouldn't raise everybody else's assessment amount, but that may take away the assessment on your particular piece of property or one of your properties. That's all I need to say, just to make sure that people understood the, any requirements for objecting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience have a question or comment, please come to the podium, state your name and your address.
My name's Jeff Fortner, at 18630 Garnett Street Northwest.
Thank you. And your comment?
All, all those culverts are flooding my property. It never flooded like that until all these culverts started to get, to get on in there. My trees are dying. My trees are falling over there. I have like a little ditch, a little creek or ditch, whatever. They call it a ditch on the map, and the ditch was six feet wide. From, from the time I moved, moved in, in 94, I built, I built out there. And the ditch was six feet wide, approximately about three, three feet deep, approximately. And, and I got pictures and stuff. We baled hay out there. I had the little go-kart races. I had mazes. That land was dry. But through the years, now, now we're getting cat tails in there in the last few, few years, last five years. Well, my kids are gone, so I don't play like I used to, you know, out in the yard and stuff. And, and I'm, you know, I haven't even noticed. My son said, hey, hey, you're getting cattails out, out there a couple of years ago. And I didn't think much of, you know, much about, about it. But I used to mow a lot, a lot of that, and I got pictures for 17 years, you know? You know, or, or more. And, and it was all dry, and I had all trees. Now my trees are all dead. And I spent thousands of dollars on those trees. But that's not all the water. It's something I just got bad trees. I'm the, for the first, I would guess for the first 12 years, from, from the time I built, there was never a problem there with that road. It was fine. And then in about 12, 12 years, it started to have problems, you know? And then they came out as, it's pretty much like, I would say, as soon as you bring your car in to have fixed, and then you find out, then the things just start going, going wrong with it. From, from the time it started to get worked on, patched, seems like every other three, four years, there's a new problem. And some of it's in the same spot. You know, I mean, I get it. It gets old. Things could get old, and it needs to be, you know, replaced, kept up with the times and stuff. I get it. It might not have been put in right the first time, but it worked. But all, all that water, my, my main thing is, my land's getting wet, my sub. I got a sub basement, so when you look at my house, there's a basement underneath the other basement. And it's been all proved. You guys proved it. But there's a sub basement. Last five years, approximately, my sub pumps been going off. Not all the time, but it start, goes off, mainly now when it rains. You know, you get like, you know, springtime and stuff, like that. But, but I gradually started to notice, all those culverts are really pushing in the water. Not a little water. It's pushing in a lot of water. And my creek is no longer, or my ditch, I guess it's properly called, I guess, was six feet wide, and now it's down to a foot. I bought a tractor just to keep a foot of it open as much as possible. But, you know, but, but they said, well, the DNR, you can't be going, going out there and changing anything. I'm not changing anything that wasn't already there. From the time I came there and built, the time I went there, that's the way it was. And it stayed like that without me having a tractor or anything to use it. It's just in the last eight, nine years or so that it started, I noticed it starting to get small. And dirt, and, but I've been seeing a lot of dirt. I mean, up on my bank, my bank was only probably this high. Now it's just built up. Dirt's coming in all the way down the creek. It just keeps building and building, building it. So if I can't keep that creek open, what's gonna happen? It's gonna flood the land out. That alone will flood the land, the land out. But with those other culverts on there, that's like doubling it. I mean, it's putting a lot of water in. I mean, my, my neighbors are all great. They're just, it's a great place to live. But I don't think everybody wants to pay for my land. Should I put a rental fee on my water use out there? I mean, I'm not gonna, of course. I'm just saying, it's my land. I don't want it wet. And, you know, you, you know, it's, you just want your stuff the way, the way it was. And I don't think my land should change because of that road. I think a ditch along that whole road would solve the problem. It'd be done. It'd be done. That, that would run right out. And the only reason is, I hate to repeat myself, I hope I'm not, but those cattails were never there. Now they're there. Never there. That was grass. Yeah, just like, you know, and I'm not saying I'll stop, stop on the road, but I want my land to be solved too. I want, when you're building this stuff, putting all those culverts in, I want not all the, not everybody's water to run into my land, to my yard. I want that problem to be fixed. I want it to be solved before this is all, all done. That would be, I mean, I think if, if anybody had my property out there and you seen the change in it, you'd say, you would say that's not right. Something should be done. You know, I, I don't know there's that thing, what needs to be done on it. But, but a ditch, I would think, and I'm not, not an engineer on this stuff, but a ditch, just to dig my, just to dig my ditch out, you know, without, I mean, I, I just don't see how putting it back in its, the way it always was, you know, be fine. That's the only reason, or, or I would have bought a bigger tractor, and I would have dug that thing out myself. You know, I have no problem doing that, if that's what it takes, but I want to do it legally. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to do anything that's not right, but that's the way I feel. If it's not right, I won't do it. You know, I'll follow whatever, you know, whatever my rights are. But I, but, but if it takes me to clean that out, I'll do it.
So when you come up from 185th, where is your property?
Right at that dot on the screen, the bottom, yeah, yep. And that's my land along, along the road, or my yard, or whatever you want to call it.
So there's a ditch, or I don't know what you want to call it. Everything runs itself, or supposed to?
Yeah.
The county ditch, all the water from the rest of that neighborhood is supposed to run itself through there?
And the ditch just is far away?
Yeah, it hits that tee, and it just keeps building and building. And then the sand gradually, and then it bursts and just pushes all that sand into my yard. And it fills up again, and then it bursts and pushes all that sand, sand, dirt, or whatever it is. It's dirt and sand. I mean, pushes it all down, down into, and it's, it fills the ditch up. Technically, it's called a ditch, so that's why I'm calling it a ditch. That's what it says on the map.
Yeah, it's listed as a ditch. You go through the pasture there.
So, so the ditch was six feet wide, approximately three, three feet, two and a half, three, three feet deep.
And that too, I think, is pulled out of the way, you know, and has somewhere to run off, because it's probably...
Yeah, it goes right, right under 185th.
Yep.
And it, but now it's stopping because it's, it's just filling up. My trees, I mean, you could see my trees are falling down and dying, actually falling down. They're, you know, they've been there for a while. But I think that's it. Thank you for my voice, and hopefully it works out.
So Shane, you want to speak to that, please?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just to quickly address that. So there is an exemption that allows the city or a ditch owner to clean out a ditch back to the original lining grade. So if the property owner was interested in doing that, or if the city was interested in doing that in a project separate from this road project, there is an exemption that allows us to go back to the original lining grade. So on the county ditches, there are normally profiles, you know, old, old plans and profiles. And those are used as a gauge and can be cleaned out to that existing profile. Most of these ditches were dug in Oka County in the, you know, between the 30s, 40s, 50s, and 60s. And there is an ability to clean out the ditch to what it was. I totally agree. If, if the ditch used to be six feet wide and three feet deep, and now it's only one feet wide, you know, that's, that's the main problem. Without having a place for that water to go, it's gonna cause water to, to back up and, and pool into yards where it probably didn't, I'm guessing this land was ditched maybe in the 60s, you know? So where it maybe didn't pool up at that time. That improvement has a little bit of, you know, permitting and stuff that would go along with it. It's not part of the, the road project that we're having the hearing for tonight. So if the, the city was interested in doing something, or if the property owner was interested in cleaning the ditch out themselves, that would be a kind of a separate project or a separate process.
So the, you know, and obviously, you're saying that, you know, it's down to about a foot wide, and over the last eight, nine years, cattails have been growing up in the last five years. So at one point, it was flowing pretty well.
Yeah, never, I mean, it just was fine. I mean, we were out there playing on the other side of land. I mean, it's, it's just fine.
And, and what's, what's happening now is unrelated to the culverts we put in last year, except for now the water flows more. It's not being stopped upstream as much in the cattails. And, and the reason that roadwork was done is because when, when the ditches remain filled with water, that's part of what's affecting our subgrade and affecting the, the road conditions there. So to get them back to flowing where they should have been flowing, but downstream on your property and downstream from that all the way down to Trotbrook, you know, that's, that's where the ditch has to keep flowing, so that water has someplace to go.
Right.
And Shane, I don't know, in that first project we did about 10, 11 years ago, that ditch actually was cleaned through that property. How long have you been in your, your house?
Since, since about 94.
Okay. So at that time, we got permission, and I would have guessed it would have been from you, so this would have been...
But, but they only, but they only did it about a foot, foot and a half wide.
Yeah, they were getting the water that was flowing there. They weren't restoring the ditch.
Right.
They were trying to get the water off the sides of the road.
Right, and, and pulled it off, just that foot, foot and a half there. But I love...
And I'm sure they left it right there on the side, so that eventually the rains would wash it back down in, so...
But, but, and, and the culverts are pushing even more water in there.
Which makes sense. Yeah.
On, on the other side. The other side, that was never wet. I mean, never, never wet. That's wet now. My trees are actually falling down. And that's, that's strictly because of those culverts. No doubt in my mind, those culverts destroy my trees. No, no doubt in my mind. You'd go out there now, you can see it. It's a lot of water coming out there. I mean, it just flowed, I mean, it wouldn't be as bad if it flowed into the ditch, and the ditch was open, and it probably, probably drained it out, but it's not. And me, for all these years, we never, we've never, I don't know if anybody's seen a water problem in any, any of our ditches, until I would say 6, 70. When they started messing off the culverts, and then culverts, and then it changed.
Yeah, I would say when we did that first road project about 10, 11 years ago, when we did that first patch, that was, we didn't change any culverts. We cleaned some out and tried to open up that ditch.
You added one.
Not in that first patch, I don't think.
I think so. You can go check, but I think so.
Yeah.
There's, there's three in there now.
But the, the culverts that were put in are to flow to the ditches that exist. And obviously, that ditch is supposed to be open enough all the way down to Trotbrook to, to let the water flow out, so...
Well, yeah, it started all filling, the hole, that whole path from, 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 from 185th, go, go on the road.
Yeah, that's, that's the old pasture land, so that's pretty...
Well, just been, higher ditch, just been, I, water, water, it's crap.
So at this point, if, if, as the engineer says, it is legal for you to clean that out to county standards, I mean, that is certainly one option to do.
I'll, I'll do that. I mean, if, I mean, he says, though, you guys hurt them, you hurt them?
And Shane...
...concrete culvert.
Hmm?
Especially these.
Exactly, it'll just expand, bust up that, uh, that culvert and...
And it is now, it's filled with half, filled with water.
And, and, uh, don't, don't mind me saying, I think it's way over half full.
Yeah, I mean, but, yeah.
Yeah, this one here.
There's water.
Yeah.
One end is more so.
Well, after the last three inches we got, I'm sure it's worse.
Well, yeah.
After the three inches we got this week, I'm sure it's worse, so.
No, it, I mean, it seems to sustain like, I don't know what the diameter of that pipe is, but it seems to sustain from the top, I'll say maybe like a four to six inches below it. Basically, there's enough water in there that over a winter, any winter, if it froze enough, it, it'll just expand and bust that pipe and that's kind of the end of the culvert and the road right there. Like, Carl, what I'm getting at is that's that whole elevation of the new road, is it gonna be high enough above those culverts to sustain such an expansion and contraction?
And the, the attention of the, the culverts, obviously, is to get the water out of those ditches.
Right.
One, one of those did crack, one of them did break the road about five years ago, five, six, I lose track of time, but around there, in the middle. You know, right in front of my house were crosses, the culvert road buckled up, and you could see that pipe, that, of all of it, and that was, it froze solid.
Right, and at least steel has at least a little bit of tendency to move.
Right.
Not cement.
And, and this was a steel, this was a steel pipe that road buckled up.
So, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Rickard, 1-8711 Garnett Street. So I'll get back to the road here, and not as much as drainage, because I think the drainage is still an issue. Um, I don't think what we've done to date is really gonna solve a lot of the issues. I think a big part of it is because of all the clay out there. Um, but I guess the big thing is, is, you know, going back through things that I looked at was, Shane, we did a, or you had done a road study years ago. And in that initial road study, you had mentioned, you know, your initial assessment to fix these roads, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I wanna say that your estimate back then was close to a million dollars to fix them how you thought you should back then. Obviously, that was quite a few years ago, we're at, where we're at today, and we're quite a bit less. So my biggest question, or one of my questions is, what guarantee do we have as residents that we're not going through the same process ten years from now, twelve years from now? Because we've been through this process once, this'll be the third time a lot of these residents have been assessed for road improvements in the city. You name any other residents in the city who have been assessed once, let alone three times. So, I don't plan on going anywhere for a while, and I don't wanna be standing right here ten years from now. So that's question one.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to address some, each question, or let them speak first and then try to address the questions?
How many you got?
Probably five or six, probably easier one at a time.
One at a time.
So, Mr. Mayor, uh, going back probably ten years ago, I think Ebony and Garnett is my most studied road in, in all of the, the city limits. Uh, and at one time, there was an estimate to basically, instead of going up in elevation, uh, remove what was there, dig it out, uh, I believe there was a, a sand cushion in that, in that estimate, and then go up, so, uh, the, I mean, this, we build roads on the silty sand, the, the, the clays that are out there on this road all the time. The largest problem was the first section that was repaired ten years ago. And, uh, I don't know exactly what the city spent, uh, on that repair, but you know, that, now that, a substantial amount of that's completed. Uh, also, all the, the culvert work is now completed. So, this cost that you have, uh, with this project is just go from where we're at to, to finish it. And again, it's going up, not digging everything out, hauling it out, and then hauling new material back in, which is considerably more expensive.
Yeah, and, and I get that, but, again, my fear comes from the fact that you got the corner in front of my place there where, when city staff did that repair ten, twelve years ago, they came in and they dug out, you know, two, three feet, added fabric, brought in fill, and then overlaid over the top. And that's breaking up just like a lot of the other areas. So again, we changed the subgrade two to three feet, now we're talking inches. My fear is, again, I'm gonna be standing here twelve years, ten, twelve years from now.
Sure, uh, Mr. Mayor, with, with any of our other road projects that we've completed in the, you know, the last, uh, ten or fifteen years, we have never had that occur, we've never had that happen. Uh, the original construction for this road was before the city had, uh, its road standards that, that we have now. And it basically was, uh, you know, uh, just a, a, the tuminous surfacing. So they didn't actually design the road, uh, it was, uh, surfaced with the tuminous to make it look good. Uh, again, uh, it wasn't up to the same standards that this current improvement is at. If during construction, we find something that is not anticipated, there might be additional expenses. And, uh, per the city council's earlier discussion, those would, those additional expenses will then be borne by the city.
And, and previously, we didn't do any borings on that road to, to know what we were getting into. I mean, obviously, when the road was breaking up, Joe did the best he could at the time.
We have done borings more than once. We did them, we did them initially just this past year, and we did them prior to that as well.
Yeah, but not before we did that patch job by your place ten years ago.
Uh, I beg to differ. So you might wanna double check that, 'cause I remember talking to the guys both times they were out, so. Um, another, another comment or question is that, again, I, I, I know the, the city's newer policy as far as road assessments has, has been a fifty-fifty split. And I underst, and I, I do know that's kind of a guideline, it's not anything that's set or cast in stone. So one of the things, obviously, I'd like the council to take some consideration in the fact, again, that some of the residents in this neighborhood, this'll be the third time we've been assessed for roads. So, consider that somewhat. Um, the other question I have is, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was my understanding too that the city was looking at doing Hundred Eighty-Fifth and Jasper and actually looking at some state aid funds to do those. Is that truly the case, and if so, would it make more sense to do this project the same, same time to take advantages of some of those funds or, or savings, I guess?
As to the, uh, the state aid, um, this, this road wouldn't qualify for state aid?
Well, I understand that, but again, you're doing it as a, one big project, so that's why I ask.
Oh, you're saying wait until, the, the proposal on Hundred Eighty-Fifth and the proposal going up Jasper is a, a grant we've applied for. We have no idea whether we'll qualify for that or not, so we wouldn't know when that would come in. If we don't get that grant, uh, we would be leaving that, those roads until we do qualify for state aid, which, depending on how the economy goes, could be very soon, uh, or not soon at all. Uh, we really don't know, until we reach over five thousand in, in population. And should the state continue their aid program as it is, uh, we wouldn't see anything until then. The idea that combining this project with that project, um, to have a, a savings, I don't know. I, I know we try and group projects, uh, to see if we can get better bids from builders. That would be a, quite a large project, uh, so I don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, last correspondence that we received from MINDOT was that they had an overwhelming amount of applications for the local road improvement program. Uh, and that, uh, it's gonna take them longer than expected to go through them all and score them. So, I would say, based on that, our chances are very slim. There are, uh, you know, we work with other, uh, cities and towns that submitted grant applications, and there's some other grant applications that, uh, are directly adjacent to a state freeway or state highway, and that would, you know, have a significant benefit. And that's, those types of projects, uh, would score higher than our project. We'll be waiting a long time.
Yeah. So, appreciate the, the thought into it, but it's, it could be quite a while, so.
Yeah, okay, and then, so my last question, I guess, is to Mr. Rupi. Um, it's my understanding that any special assessment to a single property, the, the improvement has to, your, your property value has to be impacted directly the same amount as what the improvement is?
The, it, it, it's called the benefit test. And the best way, easiest way to understand that is, if, if your house would appraise for, say, a hundred thousand now, with the road in its current shape, and then after the road is improved, as proposed, an appraiser comes out and says your house increased in value by, to a hundred and ten thousand, that ten thousand dollars is the maximum amount the, the city can assess. The problem with this is, every appraiser has different values. And so, if someone did decide to challenge the, the city, which you had to have to do before the close of this public hearing, as I mentioned, then what it would basically be, it'd be a, a go into district court, and each side would present its evidence of the project and appraisal values and stuff, and then the judge would have to make a decision. And if the judge agreed with, it's presumed to be valid, this, you know, the seven thousand, or four hundred, thank you, would be, under law is presumed to be valid, but a, a, as Paul Rickard said, if you could show that in fact your property didn't increase by that amount, say, uh, to the satisfaction of a judge, it was only to five thousand, not seven thousand four hundred, the judge can lower the assessment amount. So that's what Paul's talking about.
Yeah, 'cause I honestly, and it's, my understanding, it's, it's solely based on this single improvement, so it's, it's my belief that this single improvement is, it's gonna be hard to show that it, my property value is gonna increase by, and I'm questioning the dollar amount, because the letter that you sent out says seventy-two hundred, but Shane's presentation says seventy-four hundred, so there's a dollar amount discrepancy there somewhere. So the letter that you sent out to all of us says seventy-two hundred?
If it says seventy-two hundred in your notice, seventy-two hundred is the...
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to point out, 'cause Shane's presentation says seventy-four, so.
Okay.
But again, I, I highly doubt my property value for this one assessment of, of paved road is gonna increase that property value by seventy-two hundred dollars. And I guess from that aspect is, can you appeal the process tonight? And only not appeal the project itself, but the actual, just the assessment value?
If someone appeals the, you know, submits an objection, then it's, that's why, as you know, when you were on the city council, that's why we hold these hearings before we award the contract. And I have had numerous clients, and all I do is represent cities and towns, and they all do these four twenty-nine projects. I have had cities and towns say, "We are not, uh, going to move forward with this project if anybody does appeal the assessment." The reason for that is, they know that this type of an action, if somebody does bring a, an appeal, it's not covered by insurance, but it has to go to district court. So there is going to be attorney's fees, appraisal costs, any other experts, engineers, all of that stuff. And they, this, a lot of the cities and towns are saying, "We, we don't wanna spend the money on that. We'd rather spend our money somewhere else if, if the residents don't want it and they're going to do appeal." That is up to the city council, but that is the basis. If, if it, if the city council does decide, uh, in the face of an, uh, of an assessment appeal, then they can still go forward with the project and, you know, defend themselves, I guess, in, in a court of law. Uh, and my office would handle that for them, if they want, or if they wanted to hire someone else, we could, they could do that as well.
Then, I guess it was my understanding too, there's also another potential point of where you can appeal, and that's thirty days after the, prior to the assessment actually valued.
No.
No?
No, it, and I wanna make it very clear, when, that's why I make, you know, you've heard me talk at many of these nights, at these types of hearings, when you were, your time on the council. That's why I wanted to make sure everybody understood. If you wanna preserve your right to, uh, uh, appeal, you have to submit a written objection before the close of this public hearing. And if you don't, well then, under state law, you could be precluded by the court from, it's like a statute of limitations in a sense. And so I wanna make sure people understand that. There's nothing fancy about it, it's, I hereby object to the proposed assessment. Sign and date it, put your name and address on it, and hand it to the, the mayor. And then, if you, that doesn't mean that you are going into court, but that is the prerequisite for doing that. Then you, if, when it's appropriate, you can go into court and file that, but you also have to get a copy of that from the clerk to file with your complaint, saying, "I, I can show that I've done this objection." Because if you can't provide that, court will probably dismiss your case. Does that answer your question, Paul?
So I guess, in, in conclusion, I just, again, based on what the council knows about the history of this development and the roads, again, I'd just like you guys to consider, you know, being this would be our third assessment to look at that overall dollar value. Thanks.
Thank you.
Shane, can I just clarify, 'cause when you were going over the plans...
Councilmember Alders, you would like to speak, yes.
When you were going over the plans, you said, when we did the core samples, it's three and a half inches deep, plus minus that. Um, when we get done, it's gonna be twelve inches of gravel on it, so it could theoretically increase the height of that road seven, eight, nine inches?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anybody else like to speak on the Ebony and Garnett? Mr. Paul, yes, please. Yes, it's, since these meetings are recorded, I wanna make sure that people can hear your questions.
The only two things I wanted to bring up is that, um, I guess, do you feel that when this is all done, the quality of the road, I know we talk about the twenty years, I'll say the collective confidence is not very high with the, um, stability of the road, the quality of the road after the fact. Not anything to do with your work, it's just, it's the ground around there. So it's kind of that leading, okay, to the next summer, to the second summer, third summer. Where does it leave us that, okay, we're paying or have paid an assessment on a road that's completely redone, and mostly due to water, all of a sudden, if the ro, the road starts to so, show some substantial failing, how readily, how quickly does this get fixed? I mean, when all of us have paid a, a substantial amount of money, and I'll say that, that confidence is not real high, just because of the water. I, I don't know what there is, is for an answer. And I know that to leave here tonight, that if there's not a, if it's a vote, if I'm saying that correctly, but if there were delays, if that road is not done, redone this year, kinda leaves you with, okay, how many more years does that road bed, not the asphalt, but that road bed have, where it can go through another season, before it has just absolutely fallen apart, where maybe it's not even passable?
I, I think two things there, and, and obviously, a lot of the discussion here tonight was the water. And I know, history of this, since we've been a city at least, it's been the standing water and, and the effect on the bed of water standing on either side of it. So I think, um, it would, it would, I would assume one of the big things we need to do is get the water moving. Because all the other repairs, the, the preparation work we did last fall was intent to, intended to get the water out of the ditch on the north side crossing Mr. Porter.
Forever.
And get it moving downstream from Mr. Porter's property. 'Cause if that's moving on either, the east-west of Garnett or north-south, if it's moving away, that gives us more confidence that the road's gonna hold up. Now, back to, um, the preparation of the road bed, um, we have to rely on the engineering firm for that. And this would be a closely monitored project, because this is, um, in the time we've been a city, this has been the most attention we've had on any road in the city. Understanding that, prior to being a city, there were three assessments. Uh, since we've become a city, the city's put in hundreds of thousands of dollars of city funds to maintain the road. I think that section on the south towards Hundred Eighty-Fifth has held up pretty well. The other patch jobs lasted probably longer than they should, but they're now falling apart. I think having road standards, as, as Shane mentioned, that didn't exist when that pasture was turned into a road, uh, certainly will make a big difference. Having supervision as the, the new construction goes in and the bed is repaired will be critical as well.
True.
Um, as to, um, a year, two years, three years from now, what is our, our warranty period with the, the winning bidder?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the warranty period is one, one year from the date of substantial completion. So substantial completion would be sometime later, the summer, uh, end of August presumably. So the, the warranty period would be a year from August.
And what's ours with our engineering firm that oversees it?
Um, me, Mr. Mayor, I, I understand the, the concern of the residents, I understand. Um, again, if the road does not, is not capable of supporting pavement, we will not pave it. So there are several tasks and several inspections, uh, required along the way. And if we have a problem out there that can't be corrected within the, the bid that we have, we'll come back to the city council and we'll discuss those, those problems, or those concerns with, uh, the city council, so, uh, you know, when that aggregate base is constructed and that final test roll is done, that aggregate base should not move underneath that, those, uh, that loaded dump truck tires.
And, and as I recall, uh, we had that when we did the bridge work on Old Viking. And, and we, we did the, the test roll, and we had to bring in more material on that project. So, I mean, I do have seen where the test roll has shown, this isn't sufficient, we need to do more. And that project has been eight years, probably, and, and...
Two thousand twelve or thirteen?
So, uh, so that, uh, on Old Viking has held up extremely well.
And I can appreciate everything that you said, it was just that one statement you hit there, Shane, that, uh, you know, if it doesn't pass this or that, you know, we won't pave it. Okay, now we're on a gravel road, no good.
They, they won't pave it without correction.
Right.
They'll come back to the city to get the correction. No, we're, we're not gonna leave it gravel.
I understand.
We, we had that proposal a couple of years ago, and that didn't fly, so.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Porter, please come to the microphone.
Um, on, on my cor, corner there?
Yep.
If, if that problem ain't solved, where that cul, culvert is, you'll never fi, fix this. That water has, that water is not running off. The only way it's gonna run, it's gonna stay there and it'll build. It's not, it has no place to go, the ground is level there. It has to build up to push the water on.
So we're counting on you to get your permit and get that ditch pack open?
I'll do that, I'll even get a new tra, tractor for that. But that, but that corner is too far away from the creek. See, if you can point on that cor, corner? Right there, yeah, okay, it's down a li, little, yep.
Yeah, that one.
There. That ha, the, the ditch is way off, it's a, I don't know, a, a good hundred, hundred or so feet away from that.
Is there a culvert in that corner, Shane?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe that's, uh, the, the metal culvert that was installed.
No, it's brick.
Well, that was, that's a property, okay, there's another metal culvert somewhere in here. Um, yeah, and this ditch on the west side is, is fairly flat, and there's, without going on private property, there's no way to drain it within the right of way.
You, you'd almost have to make a ditch either along the road or a ditch going back the other way. But I think if you make a ditch going back the other way, you could have a problem, 'cause now the water coming down the ditch might just work the opposite way. So you'd have to almost make a ditch alongside the road going to that other cul, culvert. There's another cul, culvert down hundred feet or so down more, yeah, right, right about in there. And you'd have to make a ditch to that culvert so it runs out to the other ditch. But, but, but if you don't solve that pr, problem, this won't be fixed. I'm just telling you, that, there ain't nowhere that water's gonna go. I, I don't see, I don't see where it can go. It's just gonna build up and buil, build up until you just make a swamp out of the whole thing. There, there, it just ain't gonna go anywhere.
We, we agree, this, this ditch is plugged and...
Yeah, I mean, e, even, even with me di, digging that ditch out, it still ain't gonna solve that pr, problem. It'll solve the other pro, problem, I mean, it'll, it'll dry it up, I mean, it'll dry it up a lot. I mean, a lot. But that is gonna get the other corner of that all, all wet. And it's just how much, how much will it take before it cracks the new, a new one? Or just totally rots that whole cor, corner out? That's it.
Shane, what's, what's the plan along the west side there where those culverts dump into it? Is that gotta go all the way down to the corner where it drops under Hundred Eighty-Fifth? Is you saying it's relatively flat right now?
Right. And right now, there is, uh, nothing proposed for drainage improvements outside the right of way. If the council were interested in exploring drainage improvements outside the right of way, I could investigate that and, uh, you know, provide back some recommendations or some ideas. But, again, we would require, uh, easements from, from private property owners. That's not work we could do within our, our right of way.
So, Mr. Porter, sounds like you'd be willing to give us an easement along your portion.
Well, sure, I can work out so, something.
We just have to get your neighbor to the solid.
Yeah, but, um, that's always been dry there, al, always been dry. But yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm an easy guy to do, to deal with. I, I think, well, not everybody says that, but, but, um, that's, the, the ditch, what I dig out there, that will help it out a thousand times. I, I mean, it'll do it a lot.
But, but we still have to have something...
It's not gonna solve the problem.
Yeah, we still have to have something where the, the ditches are going, the culverts are going underneath the road from east to west, to ask for a place for that to run off, to get down towards Tribe Brook.
Yep. Exactly, exactly it.
Thank you. So, council, would we, uh, like Shane to pursue a cost estimate on that?
I think yes.
If you would, uh, pursue that and get back to us on that?
I'm a hundred percent disabled vet, and I hear you're not adapting to the, uh, policy of the Veterans Administration? I'm an easement on my house.
And your name is?
Dennis Skam.
And your address?
Fifty-ten Hundred Eighty-third Lane Northwest.
Okay, we, we aren't to that one yet.
Pardon me?
We're not on that hearing yet, we're still on Ebony and Garnett.
Well, I just wanted to find out, I mean, the city clerk told me that you haven't adapted that policy yet, and, uh, I think, uh, the easement would put a hardship on me, I'd have to go take out a loan from the bank and stuff. I'm on a disability from the VA, I don't have a lot of money coming in.
Okay. So, when we close this hearing, we will, we will be then talking about your neighborhood, and we have our attorney here to talk about that.
Oh, okay.
All right, anything else on the Ebony and Garnett project? We will not be, uh, voting tonight to, uh, move this forward. We'll have the discussion on what we've heard tonight. Um, and then we'll have a discussion in our June meeting, with the potential of letting out bids if we decide to go forward with the project. That meeting is June eighth, um, seven o'clock, this location. So any, uh, any additional comments people think of after this meeting that, uh, please get them into Lori at the office, and she'll forward it to the council before our council meeting in June. One last call on Ebony and Garnett. Seeing and hearing none?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close this meeting, close this hearing.
I make a...
Go ahead.
I make a motion that would close the hearing on Ebony and Garnett.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Meeting is closed, hearing is closed. Good feedback. Yeah, it's, uh... Thank you for coming, everyone. They're, they're well practiced.
Most of those people have been here multiple times.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
Well, the, the, the issue on the multiple assessments would be four year of city. The city has borne all the costs since we've become a city. Uh, we'll open the next hearing, and you can... We'll open the next hearing and you can ask it again right now. All right. We will now open the public hearing for the proposed assessment of cost related to the 2021 road improvement to the Rogers Lake area project. It is 7:15. This is Monday, May 24th, 2021. And I declare this hearing open. And now, sir, if you would like to get up and give your name and your address and ask your question.
My name is Dennis King. I live at 5010 183rd Lane Northwest. And I'd like to know about the easement. I've got a 100% disabled vet and I'm fixed on a VA income and you're asking me for like twice what I'm getting as an income.
Bob, do you know on the...
I wasn't, not aware of the situation. The Minnesota law does allow cities and towns, in their discretion, to adopt policy to grant deferments. It doesn't wipe out the assessment, but it does defer it with interest. And it is something that the, the city can consider adopting a policy on. And I could, if, if that's something the city would like to explore, I could put something together for your consideration at your June meeting. There isn't, there is documentation that has to be adopted. But in the past, you've never adopted any deferment policies. And that, what the city also needs to understand is you would still be paying, you'd be absorbing that assessment amount in, you know, in your budget now because you still have to pay the contractor and so forth. And what the property owner needs to understand is it's not, it doesn't extinguish that assessment, it just defers it to a later time with interest, which can accumulate and it can be a significant amount later.
Well, what good would that do me? I would just be going farther into debt.
I'm sorry, sir?
I'm saying, what good would that do me? I'd just be going farther into debt.
That is correct. That's why most people, once they understand that, don't ask for the deferment because it would be a real hardship later. It, it's a hardship now, I understand that. But it would be, when that amount plus all the accrued interest comes, it, it does have to get paid at some point in time and that's the problem. It doesn't extinguish it, sir. It does not make it go away, it just...
I thought it would modify it if nothing else.
No.
Why is that?
State law.
Yeah, well, state law. I was up north in Deer Creek and I got a break on taxes. I come down here, when I first moved in, I'm getting a break on taxes and all of a sudden I get a 5,900 assessment thrown at me and I'm not making half that a month.
Well, remember, this 5,900 assessment is not payable in a lump sum. That is payable over a five, excuse me, a 10-year period. So again, it's not something that is, you know, they, they vote to not, you know, they vote to assess and then all of a sudden you have to come out and write a check or give a credit card. That is something that you have a right to, as we'll, when we get to the presentation, you'll hear. However, it's something that is payable over a 10-year period. So say $590 per year and even that is going to be spread on your taxes. So take 590 divided in two for each of the payments. So that spreads it out and, but it's not, does not go away if we defer it. Deferment means you just don't pay it now, you pay it later.
Well, that isn't the way I understood it. I'm sorry, but, you know.
All right, Shane, we'll start with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight we're talking about what we call the Rogers Lake area. Maybe I need to go back to a slide, but it's 183rd Lane, 184th Avenue, 185th Lane, South Circle, Fentry Street, Waco Street and Nikima Street or portions thereof. In this map, it's every road that is shown in red. And additionally, this road, segment of road, shown in blue. So just a little bit of background, City of Nellin has 34 miles of paved road, 29 miles of gravel road. This slide just meant to inform you, we have a lot of miles of road and we don't budget enough to fully fund all the capital improvements that are needed to these roads. So the city has adopted a, a system where they pay some of the project costs out of the city budgets and also assess a portion of the project costs. And this project is being considered for construction this year. So, from the records that we were able to obtain, the original construction of these roads occurred in 1977 and then there was an improvement project to pave the roads in 1990. These are fairly narrow streets. They're about 20 feet wide, so they're narrower than our current city standard of 24 feet, but they seem to be functioning fine for the, the traffic that's out there. Last year, you probably saw some crews out there doing some repairs in several, several areas. Those were areas that were known to have subgrade problems. So those areas were dug out last year such as, such that they could winter, go through a free stop and be ready for this improvement project. All in all, it's a 31-year-old road. The pavement is in the condition that we would expect. Alligator cracking, some potholes and it's, and it's nearly, near at the end of its useful life. So the proposed improvements would be to reclaim the existing botuminus, replace the road culverts, and that's just the road culverts, it does not include driveway culverts, pave the new botuminus, three and a half inches thick and again, at that 20-foot width, so we would match existing. We would match driveways, which means that botuminus driveways would be matched in with botuminus, concrete driveways with concrete and gravel with gravel. So in other words, replace in kind. We reestablish the gravel shoulder. And all in all, there are no major drainage improvements proposed as part of this project. So a little bit about what the process looks like. This is a reclaim machine. In this, in this photograph, you can see the reclamer has already made its pass in this lane. Now it is moving from the right of the screen to the left of the screen. Right here, you have the existing botuminus pavement. This machine grinds that up, mixes it into the underlying aggregate base and behind, we leave our, our aggregate base. So we, we like this construction method because if we originally had three and a half inches of pavement with six inches of aggregate base underneath, when this machine goes and grinds it all up, now we still have that same thickness. Now we have nine inches of aggregate base. So we automatically have more strength than the road did initially and then we pave our, our new man on top of that. After they reclaim it, they shape it with a road grader. We can pack that aggregate base to prepare for paving. And then we pave the botuminus in two lifts. So the first lift is what we call a non-wear course or a base course. And then the, the, the second lift is an inch and a half of wearing course. So again, proposing to pave that with 10-foot lanes, 20-foot total width, you'd have the class five aggregate shoulder on either side of that. And the, the new road will be slightly higher than the existing road. And so we would match in that slope with topsoil on the end slope to provide an acceptable slope. So the last time that we invited you all in was what's called a public improvement hearing. And at that hearing, we took in input of what type of things should be considered for the road project. Since then, we've prepared construction plans. We've actually went out for bid on these projects. So now we have actual contractor bids. Bids are open on May 11th. The total estimated project cost, or the, the estimate that we used when we sent out the notices was $863,763. Bids actually came in about $100,000 less than that. So we received a really good bid for this project. It's also noted that the city is proposing to pay the drainage and subgrade improvement cost. So we think we, we corrected the areas where we had subgrade problems. If we find more during construction, those, those subgrade problems would be corrected and that would be at the city's cost. Also, the, the segment that we looked at on the map that was in blue, which is 185th Lane, the cost of that is $32,000 and that's to upgrade it to, to pavement. And so those two properties on 185th Lane, these two right here would have a slightly higher assessment because there's a, a larger improvement proposed for those two properties. So that, those total project costs would be partially financed by assessing to the benefiting properties. The benefiting properties are shown on this map with a, a blue number. It's all, anything on here with a, a blue number would receive an assessment. The city uses a per-unit assessment method. So for the two properties on 185th Lane that were, be upgrading from gravel to pavement, the proposed assessment amount is $8,000. And for the remaining 52 properties, the proposed assessment would be $5,800. So if you choose, if the city advances this project and awards a contract, once the project's done, the, the project will be substantially complete by end of summer, like end of August, is what we generally call for things to be done, just before school goes back in the session and we're dealing with school buses. But if you choose, you can pay off that assessment in full prior to November 15th of this year. If that assessment's paid off in full, it does not go onto your property taxes. If you do nothing, if you choose not to pay it off in full, then that, that will just automatically be added to your property taxes. It's amortized over time, over a 10-year period.
With interest?
With interest. So just a little bit about where we're at in the schedule. We're here tonight at the assessment hearing. The, at the June meeting, we'll ask the, the city council to consider approving the bids and awarding the contract. Construction could start within a few weeks of that, but it's really dependent on the contractor's schedule. So the way we set up the specification is we give them basically the entire summer so that they can determine when it best fits in their, their schedule. And that's how we, we get the best bids. But then we have a completion day contract, so, so they're only allowed, once they start the project, basically, they have to make continued progress until the project's completed. So we, we feel that's the best way to get construction bids and it also keeps that project from, or keeps the contractor from coming in, starting it and then leaving without, without it finished. So we always hear when we have these meetings, what are some alternatives? Can we just delay the project? And yes, that's always an option. Usually, if the projects are delayed, however, you'll experience more potholes, decreased level of service and really, the costs just continue to go up. So, that is the end of my short presentation. With that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Shane. Attorney Bob Rupi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a, a short information to provide to you. Number one, this is the second of the two public hearings. You had the improvement hearing before, which is a similar presentation by Engineer Nelson about the project to get your input about whether you thought the project should move forward. We now have a little bit more amount of information regarding the actual costs. And now we provided you with a notice of the assessment amount. That assessment amount cannot increase, but it potentially could decrease depending on what the actual costs are once the project is completed. That's why you saw on the engineer's schedule, they'll probably be considering adopting the assessment of, of resolution sometime in September or October to get all those costs. It can't raise, but it can be lowered. And generally, the policy of the city has been to give the residents the benefit of any cost savings. That same thing with the interest rate. One thing I do want to also impart to you tonight is that if you wish to appeal your assessment amount, that means go into district court and say, my property didn't benefit, as you might have heard from the prior public hearing, you have to do that. You have to submit that written objection prior to the close of this public hearing. So once that motion is made to close the public hearing, it's got a majority vote and the gavel goes down, the right to appeal the assessment can be denied by a judge if, if somebody tries to later bring it. If you do submit that written objection, it is not something that you're automatically going into court. It is something that if you do go into court, a judge is going to want to know that you objected and they'll ask for a certified copy from the city in their files to show that in fact you had submitted this either before the public hearing or at the, at, before the close of the public hearing. So I do, we had that whole discussion at the Ebony and Garnett public hearing. Some of you might have heard that. That's what we were talking about. If you were thinking of challenging the thing that your property didn't benefit, you have to do that before the close of this public hearing.
Before the close of this meeting, before he says close?
Yes, yes.
And so I write it on a piece of paper?
Yes.
Okay.
You write, I object to this proposed assessment amount. I would need your name and address and your phone number and, you know, that's it. And then it has to go to the mayor as the presiding officer. And then that would then be part of the city's files. And then, once they adopt the assessment rule, you have a certain period of time to appeal and you would, you or your lawyer, whoever's helping you, would have to contact the city and get a certified copy of that document to show that you did it in a timely fashion. If you didn't, you may be precluded.
Does it benefit me to tell you why I want to object?
That would be at this public hearing. After I've said this, then the mayor will open it up for all the residents to state why they have any concerns, issues, you know. And, but that's the, that's why this hearing is happening tonight. Any questions on that? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Bob. All right, so now we will, we'll open it up for discussion on the residence. So what I'll do is ask you to come to the podium, state your name and give us your address and then your comments, concerns, questions can be answered by anybody on the...
Can I get back to the map?
Yes.
We are the first driveway off of 7th Avenue on 183rd, which becomes 184th.
Could you state your name, please?
Fallon, F-A-L-L-O-N. First name Christine with a K. 4810 184th Avenue Northwest.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so your property is the first driveway in?
From Highway 7.
Right here?
Where is Highway 7?
At 7th there.
Okay. We're on the north side of the lake, Rogers Lake. Where is that?
That's the blue down in the corner there.
Our property, when we come in off of 7, we're in Oak Grove. Isn't that right?
Correct.
About six, maybe six feet of our property is in Oak Grove.
Okay.
Our driveway is in Now Then. And about maybe two driveway widths is also Now Then. And that's the extent of our property on the road. And being treated equal to the rest of the properties, we don't see that we are equal. There are others that are much larger and then you have the opposite over there in the blue who will be paying more. So my, my concern is somebody will pay more for an issue, but yet we're going to pay way more than the little bit of Now Then road that we are on. And we never go through these roads to get out. We go right over to Highway 7, which is a quarter of a mile. which is a quarter of a mile at most. So that's my objection, and I'll write it up.
Anybody else?
Just go ahead, put it. Uh, Kurt Beborn, M-A-I-B-O-R-N, uh, forty-nine, forty-eight, one hundred and eighty-fifth lane. Um, so the the section of road that she's talking about right at the beginning there, they repaved that and within a year, that thing was cracking and it looked like crap. So what, what guarantee are we having on the roads that we're doing now that we're not going to have the same potholes, same cracks, same areas all over again a year later after we paid all this money? I, I, I understand that you're going to do, you know, grade corrections, but w- why didn't it work on that other section? And, and another thing that pisses me is, is much taxes that we pay and the trillions of dollars that Biden's taken for infrastructure, and yet we still got to pay extra for this, it's, it's disheartening. And then not to mention, coming off of COVID, and the government's done nothing but stifle business around here in Minnesota, especially in Minnesota, um, uh, you know, a lot of people are out of work right now and you're asking for this extra money to do this road. It's just wrong. I mean, I, I wouldn't have had a problem before, but the way things are going, I don't even know if I'm going to have a job tomorrow. So. Maybe you guys should think off that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Oliver.
So I think the, the process, and I guess I'll let Shane answer if I'm wrong, but the reclamation process that we're going to use this time is different than just an overlay. So when you overlay over the top of an alligator cracked road, a couple of years later, you're going to get an alligator cracked road again. So.
And that's what was done on the other road?
So the, with the reclamation progress or process, um, it actually, it's a big, it's a big drum with, with carbide teeth on it and it cuts up the asphalt and mixes it into the subbase to improve the overall subbase. So what's happening with your road is the subbase is, I'll say, not good. And that's why the road is moving around and it's created all these alligator cracks. And then you take the fact that we haven't maintained it, so the wear course is gone and that creates all the potholes. So you've got two issues that we're trying to fix. So if we do the reclamation, that fixes the subbase and that takes the asphalt that's there and improves the overall subbase. And then they're going to go over the top of that with additional aggregate to get a better overall subbase. And then they'll go over the top of that with an ass- new asphalt base course and wear course. So that'll correct the underlying issues so that it won't move in the winter time and cause all these alligator cracks um, and improve the overall r- ro- road surface. And it kills me that we're looking at Tarex pictures reclaim- reclaimers because I designed the Caterpillar versions for about ten or fifteen years. So I've been on a lot of those, I've been on a lot of those jobs. But that's the reason that like when you go through low ground and swampy ground on a, just a normal highway and it's, it's uneven and then you get to the other side of it and it's good, it's the subbase that has failed. So that's, this process works well on these, I would say, rural type of roads, um, to improve that subbase. So, and totally agree with you on the transportation, but that's like federal issues and this is kind of local issues. So that's unfortunately kind of a bit out of our wheelhouse in terms of what we can and can't do from, uh, federal tax dollars to the local level. Um, but from a process standpoint, the last team that was in here with the other had the same questions. They're like, hey, the road is terrible. What guarantees do we have? What Shane is proposing is going to address the fundamental issues with the subbase itself, which, once you fix the subbase, it'll correct it so that it'll drain properly and have a good, it'll have a good base to land with the new asphalt.
How long should this road last then?
So I'm going to defer that to Shane because I can tell you about the machine. I can't tell you about the mechanics of the road.
Let's, let's, uh, start with, um, back when that road was constructed thirty-some years ago, the township had no road standards. So the base course that was there, uh, was not built to any standards. The repairs that the city has done over the past number of years, um, what we've been doing is literally, uh, pulling trees out. When, when the, the road was built, they just cut down the trees and buried them in the road. And some of them decayed and and the roads have caved in there or settled. Um, we have some, some huge tree trunks we pulled out of there over the years. And so the three corrections, we did this last year, was that same thing, uh, to try and get the, um, the incorrect material out of there and start preparing the base. Let it winter over, let things settle. And then, as Jason was saying, um, now we would go in and prepare the base properly. So as to the expected life of the road, Shane, in, in this type of reconstruction, what would you expect?
Mr. Mayor, the, so all the design guides, uh, we, you know, we use MINDOT design procedures. And all the design guidelines are for a twenty-year road life. Our goal is for these roads to mu- to last, uh, much longer than that. And we can extend the life with proper maintenance and also by constructing vituminous overlays at strategic times. Uh, and, you know, we've seen roads, road pavement life be extended to easily thirty years, if not longer, uh, with the, the use, the proper use of vituminous overlays and and proper maintenance. So twenty years is the design. Our goal is thirty years or or longer.
And then when you say it lasts twenty years, does that mean that it's going to have to be, this whole process will have to be done over again then at that point? Like, let's say it just lasts twenty years, in your view.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if it, if, if we didn't do the maintenance, if we didn't do an overlay at the, the right time, uh, yeah, twenty years from now, we'd, we'd likely be back in this room doing the same thing.
And, and the city does have a policy that, um, every year we crack seal vituminous roads. Uh, we do the north half of the city one year and the south half of the city the opposite year. So every other year, the road is, is maintained with crack seals. So what cracks do open up, we come in and seal those to try and keep any deterioration from getting, getting bad. Also, in, in our road plan for the, uh, long range, we are going through, Shane has prepared a road study for us and we're looking at roads to go in and, and do overlays at strategic times so that we don't just ignore the road and let it last twenty years. And so when he's saying the thirty-year road life, that's with the, the maintenance being done properly and the overlays when they should be so that we don't have the deterioration. Uh, water getting into cracks, uh, the sun deteriorating the surface, those things will all wear the road, uh, normally. Uh, but as we do preventive maintenance, it will, uh, prolong the life of that road. Obviously, the road where it is with no base, with trees buried in the road, um, we're sitting at a thirty-year life right now, but, uh, that's with no proper preparation. So.
And with those trees buried in, you can plainly see where it is because it's like a constant problem, the road sinking and stuff. And I've seen where you guys tore up the road to get those trees out, but I think you've missed a couple of spots. There are some intersections that have just been a, a problem in that area and those weren't tore up. And I'm just worried that you guys are going to go through this whole process and miss a tree under there and we're going to have a big patch, you know, later on. I mean, I, and then who pays for that? Like, let's say you do miss a tree and it's constantly sinking the potholes. Then is that another assessment on us or is that a part of the warranty? Or how long is that warranty? A year, you said?
That's correct. It went one year on the.
So two, so let's say two years down the road, that thing's just busted apart. Then what, the city comes in and does that?
At, at that point, the city's policy is to absorb those costs. Uh, the preparation, uh, Joe Glaze in, in Public Works has been pulling trees out of there for, I'm going to say at least three years, four years. And so we've tried to identify any of the sinkholes. Now, some of those intersections may have had the trees pulled out before, but we haven't gone back and remedied the base overall. So that might be former, uh, pits, we call them, you know, the lumber pits.
Can you talk to the quality check too?
So, and, and, uh, in the construction process, you know, this will be overseen by Shane's organization. So they will be doing the management, uh, whoever is running that. And they do a test, a, a test roll. So if the road bed is properly prepared, the test roll will identify that. If there's still subbase issues, uh, at that point, the city would pick up the cost to repair that subbase because we are giving a bid here that we can't go above. So at that point, if there's still subbase correction, when the engineering firm does a test roll, then the city will pick up that cost to get the, the road bed properly situated before it put vituminous down. So that is part of the supervision. So Shane?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say, I mean, if the residents know of specific areas where they, where you've seen, uh, the road move or settle or that, that we, we haven't corrected yet, I'd be interested in knowing where those are at. And so if you can give me a fairly.
Yeah, if you're coming in on Seventh, uh, it's the first inter- oh, well, it's the first intersection where an actual road is. There's a dead end one. I don't.
Yeah, and that, this is a cul- a short little cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
So it'll be this intersection here? Okay.
A cul-de-sac being done too? Cul-de-sac's being done too, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, that one's just terrible with like the potholes are just insane.
It's terrible out there.
And that's saying something because the whole neighborhood is.
Hi there. Comments? Dale, oops, oh. Dale Beidleman, B-E-I-D-L-E-M-A-N, one eight five one zero Waco Street. Thank you. Uh, I'm more than happy that you're going to be doing this road. Um, I'm not concerned about the assessment or anything like that. I would like to have it done sooner than later. I mean, that road is, I've lost wheel bearings. Uh, they've come in and put dirt in there and now that's all gone and now we got dirt road, basically, because all the dirt's been splashed out. Um, I know you got the bids came in last week and Tri, not Tri, is it Tri County that got the bid?
Knife River.
Knife River got the river?
Knife River's lowest. They don't have the bid yet, but they're the lowest right now.
Okay, they're the lowest bid. And Valley over here is, was really, I just happened to be there when that opened up. So it was just like strange. I was talking to him about my driveway to get it done. Um, um, and so now you're looking at probably the end of August, maybe when you're looking at getting this done now? Or can you approve that like right now and get it going? Um, or can you get somebody in there to put some more dirt down in those holes or do something? Because right now, these holes are getting, and my wife's got a Prius and it's, you know, I don't want to pull her out someday.
So, so I will say, you know, from Lori, that you can get Jill go out and.
Pardon?
Lori will have Jill come out and, and take care, somebody from the staff will come out and take care of the big pits right, the big potholes right now?
They're all over the place. So it's, you know, you're going to, he's going to have to have a truckload out there. Um. Pardon? Yeah, bring a sleeping bag. Um, no, I, really, my pro- is, is there a way that we can get this done sooner?
Well, and again, we, we have the likelihood of a, a protest here tonight, so that will affect our decision on the project. Um, at, at this point, uh.
I'll take it. The cheaper it is, we've been buying a new vehicle. So.
And that's, that's something we can talk about, uh, what we might be able to do. Because I understand, even though the property runs all along the road, right now, she's driving in just to the driveway.
Right, I understand that and I didn't know that. And I sympathize with her very much so and I can see where it'd be, she'd have a grief.
If, if there's a creative solution that our engi- that our engineer agrees with and our attorney agrees with as a council, we would certainly be open to that tonight.
Okay. And then that bid that came in at eight hundred thousand, is that come, cover out or is that cover the, um, cost of digging out the, the lumber and all the stuff out of that or is that just the pavement?
The total project cost.
Okay. And that's, okay, digging out the lumber and the whole.
Correct.
Per tests and stuff like that. Okay.
Culverts, the road culverts.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dave Daufenbach, forty-nine, fifty-nine, one hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue.
What was his name?
What was your last name again, Dave?
Daufenbach. I just got a couple of questions. Some of mine were already answered, so. When they, how much higher do you think the original road or the new road will be than what we have now? About two to three inches, you think?
Uh, probably closer to four.
Closer to four. How far in will they go from that into my driveway? I got concrete. How far in will they go so I don't have a?
Big dip.
Big dip.
Mr. Mayor, there is not a standard, uh, length or width. All driveways are evaluated individually. Uh, and so it depends on, you know, the slope of the driveway, whether it's going down or up, and how soon an acceptable transition can be made. So.
Because I did my driveway to match the blacktop after the blacktop was in. So I put my concrete in afterwards, so I don't.
Are you level from there, Dave?
Yes, I am.
So in a case like that, it would be as level.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, uh, most transitions or the, in most cases, the shortest transition is about ten feet. Uh, on concrete dark driveways, we actually look at where your joints are and try to go to the, to the first joint, which would make an acceptable.
Well, the first joint's only in about three feet, so that ain't going to take care of it.
So that's probably the second joint.
Okay. Uh, well, we can work with them when they get out there. And will they do additional stuff at that time for people if they want some driveway work done or not?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the way that works is each contractor kind of sets their own, uh, guideline. So usually, we get a lot of requests for driveway paving, uh, while the paving is out there. Uh, some of the contractors will do it. I would say a higher percentage of them will not. Uh, we always, when a contract has been awarded, that's one of the questions that we ask. Uh, and then we pass that information on to residents that inquire. Um, the, but we would not be involved, at all, at all involved in that additional work. So if, if there's a contractor that's on the job, basically, we would give you, uh, the contractor's name and a phone number. And then from there, uh, you would take it and if you want, wish a contract for separate work.
And will the homeowners be notified of that then, once the bid is in? Do we get another letter saying it's been approved and if you wanted some additional work, you can contact ABC or however you do it? Or I don't know how you do it, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, generally, we, we, we do send out a mailing to each and every resident before a project begins. Um, and that includes contacts that the residents can, uh, can, can get a hold of. It's usually, uh, staff from my office, uh, and the, the people that'll be the onsite representatives. We generally do not provide the contractor's phone numbers, uh, in those letters because that's not, one of their responsibilities is not to deal with all of the homeowner concerns and questions. That's usually our responsibility. Uh, so if, if there's a contractor that's interested, it's usually just a verbal conversation, uh, email, something like that.
Okay. Will the road restrictions be different or will they be the same as what we have now as far as vehicles going in and out of there?
I'm not aware of any special, uh, road restrictions on your road. I don't, I don't.
What can we handle? What can we ha- we got semis going down our road.
Sure. So I mean, it's, the, the proposed road improvement is a nine-ton design. Uh, and I'm not aware of any signs in your neighborhood restricting the neighborhood to something lesser than that right now.
We used to have them. There was some years ago of the road restriction weight limits. I don't know what happened to them. But, uh.
No, they put them out in the spring. Uh, we put out temporary road restrictions on, on vituminous in the spring.
I, I don't want to have the problem no more in any of the. I understand. I, I don't want to have the problem no more than any of the rest of the people there. Ten years from now, if, if these big heavy trucks are allowed to come in there on a regular basis. We got enough with school buses and garbage trucks and those types of things, so. You know, we each got, I don't know how many different garbage companies come out there in a week, but you got regular garbage, you got your recycling, and there's different companies, you know, that's all wear and tear on them roads and-
And we, we've done this in, in previous road projects, people, that's one of the biggest concerns because we can't limit garbage trucks-
I understand that.
And school buses.
That's why I'm asking what the, if the road's gonna be-
What, well, it's a nine-ton road, but what some neighborhoods have decided is they would go to the trash haulers and say, if we get enough people to sign up, can we get limited number of trash haulers in here, one or two, rather than three to five? So you have all the different trucks going up and down the road. So neighbors can get together and, and work out a deal with the trash haulers too to minimize the additional. Now, the, the semis, we do have our, our planner and code enforcement sitting in the back here, so if there's semis on a nine-ton road, if they're going in excess of the design of the road, that would be a different issue.
And I don't, I don't know if they're, if they're can or they can't. I'm just asking. I don't know if the road's capable of, that they can or can't. I don't know if the semi's loaded, unloaded. I don't, you know, I don't see them, so.
Liz, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's that business of, uh, people are out there that was a hall business. And we watch them go by every morning and every night.
That isn't-
In four.
That isn't the one on, uh, that's on Ventura, isn't it? Are you, are you talking that metal business?
Yeah, I think another round road.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that, they usually come in, they were, my understanding was, is that road was designed for them to come in on Ramsey, that they did that road better. And I don't think we have those people.
Okay, sorry.
And I honestly, I don't know who it is. I don't know who he is or what business they have.
Ms. Valen, you said that there are other trucks going by your place every day?
We watch them all the time.
Is there any labels on the trucks, any identifier?
Well, we can't see the name. We can see all of the lights that a semi has, the light, they go by, we go by in the morning. I don't know how many times you hear them, all the time.
And I'm not saying they should. I just don't know if our road's capable of handling that. That's all I'm asking.
Well, and, well, and again, and that's one of the things, if, if we're building nine-ton roads, we gotta make sure it's got appropriate traffic. So residential neighborhoods typically are not designed for full-load semis.
Full or empty, huh?
Probably empty either. But that's something that certainly the city can, can investigate, because we don't want to go to this much work to, to put in a road and have it deteriorate from improper use.
Right. Good. All I got.
Mr. Daufenbach, you've been at this a long time. Seen you at a lot of meetings. Thank you for your persistence. Anybody else would like to speak?
I would just like to back up the gentleman over there who mentioned COVID. Our economy is hardly coming out. We're going into inflation. This is really not a good time to hit residents with something like this. I mean, we don't even know what's gonna happen.
And, and certainly, that is always a concern when you're, when you're doing road projects. We, we don't know what's gonna happen around any corner.
Kind of pandemic, a worldwide pandemic is a lot bigger than the roads.
And, and we have fifty-two affected homes on here, and that's where we have to take a look at, you know, what, what does the project look like overall for all the, the majority of the fifty-two residents there, or served here, so.
A delay of a year, I mean, a lot.
No, 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 no.
If people don't have a-
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll come over and give you a thousand dollars. No, no, we need that road done. I'm talking to her, hey? Yeah, no, no, spread it out amongst all of us, fifty of us, but please, get that road done. I can't even, I can't ride a bicycle on it. It's dangerous, like you say, with all the gravel and, you know, it's, I'm sorry to say that, but it's-
Well, see, we don't use your roads, we go right up the seven.
If you ever walk that road too, it's also very dangerous.
We don't, because it's dangerous.
If you drive down our road, watch it, say, right?
I would say, you know, certainly, Mr. Daufenbach has been quite a spokesperson for this.
Well, I'll give you a thousand bucks right now, if you just rock the whatever, and we get this one done tomorrow, so.
Other comments? Yes, sir?
Terry Culbertson, C.U.L.B.E.R.T.S.O.N., one-eight-five-two-zero, Yakima Street Northwest. Just a question about the, a couple of things in the letter weren't very clear in the notice. We, we didn't get a total cost. I think the cost that was in the letter was the assessment total that we would pay. Is that correct?
That is correct. The amount in the letter is the assessment total that one would pay. It will not be higher, but it could potentially, as I said earlier, be lower, depending on how the unit prices and, and construction and everything goes on. If it's higher, then the city will have to absorb those costs.
Do you know, can you just give me an idea what the percentage of the assessment is to the total cost of the project?
Fifty-fifty, isn't it? Well, there's, there's two things. The total cost of the project, the city is picking up the removal of the trees and some of the base work. And so the, the total cost of the, the bituminous portion, Shane has that there, and we're splitting that fifty-fifty with the residents. So the city's picking up a portion entirely, and then the bituminous, I'll, let Shane speak to it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's probably close to seventy percent city, thirty percent residents.
So the-
And you're getting a good deal.
I don't have an exact amount, or exact figure, but the city is paying much more than fifty percent.
And just, just to let you know where I stood, I got the letter, I did the math, I went, holy crap, we're buying the road. I'm hearing different now. It's good to hear that there's a difference. We also, in the letter, it didn't address that if we didn't pay it upfront, it could be amortized over ten years. Is that my understanding?
It's in the letter. It's just written in a, as required by state law. So it's not, but basically, the process is, once, one of the reasons why the city council normally doesn't adopt the assessment rule right now is because that starts the interest period. And so they usually wait for a couple of reasons. Number one, by waiting until the fall, which you heard the engineer say would be either September or October, that they would have the final numbers in, and the city council then would be presented with a resolution to adopt the assessment rule. At that point in time, then interest will start to run, and you automatically have thirty days from the time we adopt that and give you notice to appeal. Usually, the last day is November fifteenth, because we're, and then that, once the, and the reason for the November fifteenth is, once the assessor puts this on the property taxes and does all their work to spread it out, they won't take it off, you know? But if, so what we typically will do is, in the fall, once the assessment rule is finalized, hopefully it can be reduced, but maybe, you know, we never know. And we know what the, our financing costs are, you know, kind of how mu- interest rate we have to pay. We have to pay a point, a point, a point and a half, to two points over whatever we borrow. So if we borrow at three percent, we have to charge you by state law, five percent, and that's bonding statutes. That's not our discretion. And that's supposed to make up, in case somebody doesn't pay their property taxes, that we have a little bit of a cushion to make sure we can make our, our debt payment. But once we, city council adopts that assessment rule, then we give you notice that this is the amount of the actual final assessment, and we give you your payment options. We send a letter, and it's not legalese, you know, as requir- you know, we put it in plain English to make sure, and Lori's nodding her head, you know, we make sure that it's something that you can understand, and we tell you, if you want to pay it off right now, you have until this period of time to do so, make the check amount to this, make it payable to the city, you know. We put it all in writing. If you decide you don't want to do that, and you just want to put it on your property taxes, then it'll be amortized over a ten-year period with the interest rate, whatever it ultimately determines to be. It can't be more than the six percent we put in your notice, but it could potentially be less. It's based on what we have to pay.
Do you have any rough estimate as to how much that payment on the property tax would be? Just like, these are kind of estimates on six percent. Could you say it's a hundred dollars, six thousand?
Well, take the fifty-nine-hundred divided by ten years. It's like five hundred and ninety dollars per year, and if you pay-
You have to add in interest.
You have to add in interest.
And how is the interest compounded?
Excuse me?
No, I-
How's the interest compounded?
Annually. If I remember right, the statute says annually. And then you just, that amount gets spread over your two property tax statements for that year. And of course, the amount that you owe will go down each year as you, you pay it off. So it's not like it's a, you know, so again, it's not ideal, but that's why we always give people the ability to prepay. We'd like to know if you are gonna exercise that route, if you decide, oh, I don't want to pay the city of now then interest, I'm going to, I want to pay this off and write them a check. We'd like to know that, because if we're going to get your money, we may not have to borrow money. And we count on that interest to make sure we can meet our debt obligations. I have had some clients, at the end of the debt service, find out they had a deficiency, you know, a little bit of a gap, and they couldn't figure it out. And what it turned out to be, when we looked back at the records, was that people decided they didn't want to pay interest, so they prepaid. And the people that were doing, the financial institutions that were putting our bond out there had made assumptions that we would get that interest when they put together what our debt service would be. So it's not ideal, but if anybody has a paved road in front of their house that's not a county road, you're probably like me, you're paying an assessment, you know?
What is the deadline, then, to make the decision whether to pay in full or to amortize it out?
That would be in the letter to you in the fall, but at least you'll have until that November fifteenth.
Okay. One other, just question about the driveway tie-in with the height of the road. I have a concrete driveway that flows down. Am I gonna have a skating rink ten feet back in my driveway because the road went up?
So, Mr. Mayor, I can't speak to his driveway individually, but the, the short answer is no, it's, it's not acceptable to have a, you know, ice ponding or, or water ponding and an ice problem in individual driveways. How we deal with each individual driveway depends on each individual driveway. If the driveway's flat, and we just can't go back far enough to make an acceptable transition, sometimes there's a crown in the driveway, so it's a water sheets off on either side. It, it really depends on, on each individual driveway. And so once, once, if, if this project moves forward, and once we have the, the contracts awarded and we receive the contractor's preliminary schedule, that triggers our first mailing out to the residents. And in there, at that time, then we assign our construction observer from our office, and that will be a person that you can meet with in the field, and they are also gonna be the one that's present while the, the contractor is doing the work. So if there's special requests or, or certain things that, that residents want to have addressed, as long as it's, you know, within the scope of the project, that's, that's the, the method to do that.
And that driveway tie-in is covered in the assessment?
That is correct.
Just want to be clear on, on those points.
We replace in kind, so. We assume a six-inch concrete driveway, and if there's anything more, then we have a, a slight increase in cost, but we would replace in kind. So if somebody has a eight-inch concrete driveway, that'll be replaced in kind.
Just one other quick question. With the new stretch of tar, I happen to, my yard sits next to the gravel road that's gonna be tarred. I have a driveway that goes to my outbuilding. Is there any issue with that? Any, that I have access there?
Uh, I, I can't speak to that. I assume if you have an access, that you would have, you would have a driveway permit with the city at some point?
I have no idea. I moved in and it was there.
Sure. So with road projects, we generally replace what is existing. So you're on the south side of Hundred and Eighty-Fifth, then?
Yeah, I just pull off the dirt road, and I've got dirt-
Right.
That goes to my outbuilding.
Right, and so-
But I like that access. I don't want to find out that you can't have a driveway here later.
Is there a culvert under that access?
What's that?
Is there a culvert under that access?
No.
So generally, our approach would be to replace that, or to replace that gravel driveway with a, with gravel. So we do call for two-foot bituminous bump outs. So the road will be twenty feet wide, and then at that gravel driveway, we will bump the pavement out two feet, and then gravel after that. And that just helps us that, when, you know, you drive, drive in traffic over it, that our edge of our road doesn't get broken up.
So the twenty feet, the gravel road's obviously not that right now. I don't know the, do you know the width of the gravel?
I don't have that. I, I mean, it's, it's pretty close.
Is it?
It's right around sixteen or, or so.
Okay.
It's, and so, it's not twenty, but, you know, it's gonna be wide and a couple of feet on either side, so it won't be a, a real substantial difference.
But there'll be correction then, obviously, in the drainage and spreading that. And another thing that was brought up was there was going to be a gravel shoulder at the edge of the twenty feet?
Correct. That's typical where you, you bring the gravel up to the edge of the road and then taper off.
And it'll just flow into that drainage ditch that's there already. It'll be negligible, I would guess?
It'll be negligible there, i- if there's a, you can see here, there'll be one to-
One to two feet of-
One to two feet.
Okay. How's that gonna affect all the mailboxes right along the road? Are they all gonna have to come out?
On a project like this, usually yes.
Okay.
They, the, the mailboxes generally overhang onto the road enough that when the paver goes by, or the truck that's loading the paver, they would interfere. And so generally, all, all of them have to be removed. We'll set up temporary mailboxes, and then they'll be replaced at the end of the project.
They're replaced with the road, the depth of the road changes, they're replaced at the proper height for the postal service.
And that's, that, that'll be something that we'll do as homeowners? We'll put our mailbox back in?
No, that, that'll be part of the project.
It is part of the project.
Nice. All right.
Thanks, Terry. Anybody else?
I'm General Piggy, that's a eighteen-six-hundred-Yakima Street.
Hi, thank you.
I'm just, they, they forgot a spot from twenty-seven going north, where, where, where that guy's got that business on the left-hand side. There's a big dip in there that they forgot.
I gotta go back to the map.
It's right before you turn right, we go down the, down that place, down to you.
Yeah, down here?
Right.
This is, I think somewhere in here is where the business is at. Is that maybe the business?
Yes.
Yeah, so-
On site, you go away, the ways to the right is a dip right there that they forgot.
Is that Burns, or is that, or is that Noben, or is that Ramsey?
No, there's, there's still a section of road that is within the city of now then. That section has bituminous curb, and we think it would probably be better to coordinate that when the city of Ramsey does, re- reconstructs their section. So that section is not being considered for reconstruction at this time.
Yeah, it was done at a different time than ours, too.
Do we have, do we, are we, are we forced to pay that loan money in that debt letter? Each, each residence? Does that go on in ten years?
Oh, yeah, it, it's amortized over ten years, and right now, the original estimate is fifty-eight-hundred dollars.
Six percent interest.
Six percent interest.
Well, whatever the interest rate we get plus two percent. So right now, interest rates are low.
Get the job done.
Again, you might have to do some negotiating to help us there, but, uh. But yes.
You got a road out there, you can't, you can't hit one of them, I'll hit another one. It's bad.
Well, the.
Kind of come up seven, seven, that's bad right there.
Depends on.
Signs out there, no, slow down. Somebody got a sign along the road. Just slow down.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Going once, going twice.
We're going to give this to.
Give it to Mayor.
So what's the next action with that?
Do you have your phone number? Oh, yes you do, okay.
Mayor?
I don't know if anybody pulled that before. It's the first time, so.
Does she know that this might have to go to court?
Yes. The question was, what's the next step if somebody did?
What's the next step with something like this?
Once we adopt the assessment rule in its final form, the property owner would have to, uh, actually file, uh, court documents. Pay the court filing fee, file the necessary, like, like a complaint.
Okay.
Type thing to challenge it.
And then?
She would serve it on the town. The town, normally this type of thing is not covered by insurance by the, the League of Minnesota City, so my office would take care of it. And then we go to court and the, the assessment is presumed to be valid under Minnesota law. And the property owner has the burden of proof through experts, you know, fa- hiring in appraisers, engineers, any other, anybody else they want to try to, to rebut that presumption that that assessment is valid. And then ultimately we go to trial, there's a trial.
Yeah.
And, uh, ultimately, a, a judge would make the, the decision. And it doesn't mean that they get out of the assessment. The judge can lower the assessment amount or keep it the same, but it, it's not like it's completely waived.
So all, Mr. Mayor, can my.
As a member of.
Do all, sometimes do cities decide they don't want the expense of going to court, so they just decide not to do the project?
Yes, the last two towns, not cities, these were towns, in face of the objection that was filed, they said that they were not going to spend the money on my office, Shane's office was the engineer on that project as well. And they said absolutely not, we're not spending the money on the lawyer, we don't have that kind of money. Because it's not just the lawyer, it's also a, you know, Shane probably have to testify, it would be an appraiser and the same, you know. And so they said, no, we're not doing the project.
But the, the defendant, is she called a defendant? The person who wrote this, they have to get all this information and pay for it too, right?
They have to put on their case.
They have to make the case.
It's presumed valid, so if we just show up, we say, your honor, the law says it's a valid assessment amount.
Okay, okay.
So therefore, once we do that, the burden now shifts to the property owner who's challenging us to put on their case to try to convince the judge that it's not.
Okay, I, I, I've never known this and I just had some questions.
And the problem is, is that it costs money on both sides for a small assessment amount. Although it seems like a large amount, it's not ten, fifteen, twenty, you know, which we see in other communities.
It's not like sewer and water.
So, so you end up spending more money between the state and this person than the assessment?
Say that on this situation because there hasn't been. I can tell you the one that judicial, that was at Judicial Estates in two thousand and nine in Credit River, the whole neighborhood got together and found out that, and they bound together to hire one, one attorney and one appraiser except, and they found out after they were done that they lost money because of the cost of the appraiser and the attorney and the engineer and so forth. And, and that, and that person that kind of led the charges was now on their town board and, uh, was going to be on their new city council. And he acknowledged that they, they all lost money. It's something to consider. It's something the town, the city needs to consider as well.
That's what I was wondering.
The question also, uh, sometimes is, do we have the right to, you know, settle or something and the answer to that is yes as well.
Oh, okay.
Dale, is it?
Thank you.
Uh, it's five thousand dollars, right? Fifty, five hundred months of fifty somehow, so that's a hundred dollars apiece? Can you, can you, you have the authorization to do that?
No. No, we'd have to re-notice it and hold another assessment hearing and all of that.
All right, no, I just, I'm just asking.
Now, you guys can graciously agree to absorb her amount and, but that would be something you talk to her about. And again, you know, it, it, I have had people withdraw their objection, but I want it in writing, that I hereby withdraw my objection, you know. And that has happened in other situations for whatever reason, you know.
Okay.
Alright, anything else?
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, sir.
In my research on the assessment, um, exactly what you were saying, the reason the assessments work is to fight it costs more than the assessed value. So do you want to spend ten thousand dollars to get out paying fifty-eight-hundred dollars? That's how, that's why assessments work because it's, if they said they were going to assess us twenty thousand dollars, well, I maybe go to court for fifteen thousand and save five hundred.
All I do is represent cities and towns. I just do municipal work. And most of my clients have a public policy of not, you know, that most of them, a lot of them have a policy is that we are going to go to court. We would rather go to court and lose because otherwise you're sending a signal to residents, oh, we just challenge it and we're automatically going to reduce it. And so it is, but it's something that each city council, each town board, whoever the governing body is, has to make their own decision.
There, there obviously is a cost to challenge, you're right, and it, it could be more than the assessment.
So when the, when the city's got to face first to challenge that for court costs or whatever, does that add to the cost of the project then?
No, that's absorbed by the, the city or the town.
Goes on your property taxes.
But that's why it goes to, you know, property, but it also why it goes back to the project itself and determining whether they're going to proceed with the project.
Well, yeah, I mean, the city is us, you know.
Right.
Right. Yeah, so, so our insurance wouldn't cover our attorney's fees, but we all do. Because we'll, we'll pay Bob's fees to contest this and so we'll do our due diligence. We'll pay the, the appraiser, we'll pay Shane's cost, Bob's cost.
If we choose.
And, and if we choose to go through with the project.
That's why I, I was, I kind of thought it was a little bit humorous when you guys are talking that the city's paying for half of it and we're paying for the other half. Well, we're really paying for all of it.
Well, the, the thing is, is that's being distributed amongst the five thousand.
Yeah, not just Joe.
But there's other projects that we paid for theirs and, and.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yep.
And, and yes, and, and we all contribute to gravel road maintenance as well, so.
Thank you.
Alright, so we have our objection. Last call for any comments.
You can pay that off with taxes, right?
Yeah, ten years taxes, yep.
Yep.
Alright, I will take a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing closed at eight-twenty-five.
Thanks for the feedback, appreciate it.
We have one more thing on here.
It's terrible. Okay.
I dropped off there last year when I was, uh, getting paid. Man, that's just terrible.
I just need to use a restroom.
They actually moved it up from our original, because it was still a couple of years back in the world, they moved it up to this, this year.
How many years have you lived there?
But I understand it, you know, that you can do it.
Okay, so we'll take a little stretch here.
Yes. We'll take five, we'll take in five hours.
Take the late thirty years. And often we would, often we would, but now I've got to deal with. I wish it was that easy.
So now we're going to wait for the next meeting?
Yeah, so we'll, so Shane will, uh.
The process here is how will we communicate it so at the next meeting we decide it?
Boy, I don't know, they, I, I had a meeting with them today and, uh, a town awarded the project about a week and a half ago and they were paving. And we barely got the signatures. The ink was so wet on the contracts. Uh, so right now they're.
Because I really do want to talk to a couple of neighbors that have driveways like mine to see if they can do a quick driveway.
And it's in the ever position?
Yeah, Knife River is not very.
They're not very good about that?
Yeah, they, they just go after all publicly.
That was open, like I said, Valley over here would have gotten that, so.
Sure. Well, Valley, I don't think can be anyone that's around here. Valley? Oh, North Valley, yeah.
When do we start the next activity?
Yeah, there's a North Valley and then there's also Valley. And he, he used to work for, with Valley and they split off and it was North Valley and Valley.
Who knows?
But yeah, the, the other ones on the south side are the same.
Yes, what time we start, next thing we're talking about, I said. We've got a couple of minutes.
Yeah, yeah, I heard from him too.
You know that the debate is going to come when we decide what we want to do.
A little bit higher. Well, we'll go back and we'll smoke them in to match into the new road surface. Right. Right, yep. Yeah, sometimes it's, sometimes only five feet, sometimes it's fifteen feet. So we'll go, we'll go back as hard as we need to. Right. Yep. Okay, yeah, me too. No, I'm the, the engineer.
I'm the lawyer, I'm the city attorney.
That's why he has the fancy clothes.
That's right.
Yeah, another meeting.
Well, if they can just write down our three choices, she can.
Uh, June fourteenth, I think is their next meeting, the second Tuesday.
No, I usually attend.
Any one of the three people that they want them.
Yes, all meetings are open to public.
There is another way to rank five of them.
That's what she wants to do.
Yeah.
They both will put them on YouTube, so if you have a computer with the internet.
If you ranked it one as your first choice or five as your second choice.
That's a good idea and then everybody can.
Yeah, if you want to go five with your most important and one with your least important, right?
I like that.
I think so. I don't know if there's anything else on the agenda or not.
I don't think we want to go through a whole nother sitting there for hours bringing up the paper and how we're supposed to do it all, you know. And spend all this time. I like this, let's simp- let's make it simple. I think we can.
Oh, the generator.
Go ahead, Simon.
We're not doing that tonight?
If, if you didn't notice it.
No, we're not. That wasn't a decision, that was just a discussion.
But it's still, it's, okay, still, you know, you can't discuss anything that has not been noticed.
It's been noticed in, on the website.
Yeah.
Yes, if you put a notice on the.
Yeah.
Well, okay, that's what I meant because I, I go to enough of these meetings, what are you talking about, you know?
We still have three things we have to discuss tonight.
I'm sorry?
We still have three things we're discussing.
I just, yeah, and that's why I just wanted to make sure, yes, you are legal to do so.
Yeah.
But thank you.
No, 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 just on, just on the. The website.
Emily.
I mean, uh.
Emily, um, Wilder, she works at Target. She is such a sweetheart. She reminds me of, I don't know, just something so incompetent. She's just, while my kids are born. Just, just, I went in there and I asked a girl, she gave me the wrong receipt. You can't do that, you're going to have to go, Emily. Just so sure. But that's alcohol. She probably doesn't want to work at those places.
Well, Perkins or.
Oh, oh, that's where she wants to work.
Well, she initially said Northwoods and I said, I'm not having to use her alcohol as a seventeen-year-old.
Shane had ever worked with the emulsion and jetting.
So I said, this place to start would be Perkins.
Uh.
How about Dennis? I want her to work at Perkins.
Like, uh, oil?
Emulsible asphalt, water and asphalt.
Yeah, no, like we, uh, we did a, kind of like a test road in Asido right near the, Mindott has a testing. You know, on the Monticello by the highway.
Oh, yeah.
What?
Why do you want to work here? And then she said, you're hired.
So she's.
The city did it as a test. And then, like, two years later or three years later, that Minnesota Native Landscapes. Uh, was actually Monticello Township. We ended up annexing into the city and asking their road to be paved.
Everywhere, everywhere.
So, we, we got to find out how it worked for like two or three years.
See, you wanted to catch up, you wanted to water.
I worked with some towns, like Silver Creek Township up ninety-four and Clearwire Township. And they're actually sealed, coated gravel roads, doing a chip seal, which is.
But they're so desperate for workers.